We're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Lori Guillen and the invocation by Pastor Laurel Worth from Chapel of Change.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor Lemons and councilmembers. Thank you for the honor to pray over this great city. I thank each of you for your great passion, your heart, and your concern for this city. Let's pray. Father, I thank you in the name of Jesus for this great city and Lord who lifts up the city of Paramount. And I ask you, Father, that you would meet every need of the residents here. You'd see the need, Lord God, and I thank you, Father, for coming in, Lord God, and doing what only you can do. I'm asking you, Lord God, to cause your face to shine upon it, that you would bless it and keep it, Lord God, that you would bring your shalom peace, Lord God, that you would show yourself to each person here today, Lord God. We thank you, we honor you, and we worship you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
At this time, we have City Council Public Comment updates.
Councilmember Guillen?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Lemons?
Here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a new segment that we just added to the City Council agenda at the start of the new year here. It's an opportunity for staff to update the City Council and the public as well about requests or issues that were brought up to our attention by the public at the previous council meeting. So again, this is something new that we're trying. Some issues will involve departments like Public Works or Parks and Rec or Public Safety, and other items may include factual corrections or clarification to information that was shared by the public. But in any case, there may be meetings where we report a number of things to you, as you will see tonight, and which is on your chair, a couple of tables there. And there may be meetings where we just don't have anything to report because nothing either came up or nothing that came up as a request, I should say. So for the first time, I'm going to cover the last two months, November and December of the meetings. So starting with our November 7th council meeting, we had a resident, Ms. Sandra Decay, that came up and discussed about sidewalks that were in need of repair in her area. After that, after she did come up the following day, staff inspected the sidewalks, they made the necessary repairs, and wrote a letter to Ms. Decay, which I had provided you last month, I'm sorry, in which I had provided to you in November, a copy of that letter. Also at that meeting, we had Mr. Gerald Serta come to the council to request a dog park. Our Parks and Rec Director, David Johnson, spoke with Mr. Serta on November 8th, and he explained our current lack of park space for residents. He also explained to Mr. Serta the possibility that we're looking at the possibility of allowing dogs on leashes in a couple of our parks. So Mr. Serta thanked him for that information as well. Also at the November 7th council meeting, we had a resident by the name of Ms. S. Davis come and say that she had issues with the Sheriff's Department. So our Lieutenant Barragon, as well as Captain Wolak of the Lakewood Station, met with Ms. Davis, and they're currently working on a solution. At the November 21st council meeting, there were no requests, issues, or concerns that were raised that required staff attention. So moving on to December, December 12th council meeting, we did have a resident, Ms. Lulise Lappin, come and discuss a discrepancy in the list of metal businesses on the AQMD website. Staff has been in contact with Ms. Lappin about this, and we provided her with the correct information about the lists that were available on the AQMD website and the issue with those lists. We also spoke to AQMD about posting the correct list because many of the lists that they had on there, some of the businesses were no longer in business. So also during Ms. Lappin's comment, the mayor mentioned that Ms. Lappin had received written correspondence from the city about this in the past. This was not the case. There was a miscommunication amongst staff, and the mayor was misinformed by me. So my apologies for that, and I explained that in an email to Mrs. Lappin about that. Another point of clarification, when Mr. Serta came up, when he spoke, he mentioned that there were 12 homicides in 2017. We checked with the Sheriff's Department, and there were actually six homicides in 2017. So those were just two points of clarification that we wanted to make. So with that, that concludes my report. And if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Okay, great.
Okay, we'll move to public comments.
All right. Our first public comment is from Ms. Cindy Nielsen. She wants to address the council about general comments. Ms. Nielsen?
I have come up here just to say a few words about decency, integrity, and respect. It's one thing to criticize the policies and look at councilmembers' public campaign and voting records of elected officials. I have done that myself. However, to personally attack an elected official is uncalled for, even to the point of looking into restraining orders. My family has chosen to take the high road and have not responded to all the hateful and spiteful and outright lies about our family on social media, including my cousin, an elected official, and my 82-year-old father, who by the way, has been out of office for 10 years. Councilwoman Lori Guillen has chosen not to respond to the hateful comments and lies told about her online because she is taking the high road. She does not have a fake online profile like those who have stated otherwise. Those that claim to make Paramount positive have chosen to create a webpage to specifically post personal attacks against those that do not agree with their agenda. If you are such an upstanding man of integrity, why would you allow your family members to personally attack members of the community, call them names, and spread outright lies? There are reasons the community is supporting the recall. Instead of attacking those that do not even have part in this recall, why don't you look into why the majority of the community has an issue with you? Your true colors toward the community are showing. I was appalled to hear a commissioner visited a resident's home using intimidation tactics and threats to cut off the recall, then used a racial slur against his father. Appalling. Are these the people you want to represent us? I am disappointed in our council that you will support voter suppression by voting not to allow an election in 2018. I have come up and stated as much. This is the backbone of the recall. Quit trying to deflect the reason for this recall and stop attacking the upstanding citizens of this community who don't agree with your policies and try to intimidate them. Do we live in Communist China? No. We are Paramount residents, working Paramount, have businesses, invested interests in Paramount. We can come up and address the council, attend community events, and criticize. We feel you have not, we have voted against the best interests of our community despite our last names. In the words of Oprah, "Residents, a new day is on the horizon." Well, you can come to the City Council and be heard. When a council member will not, will listen to you speak instead of talking amongst themselves. If you speak Spanish, councilmembers who can't understand what you are saying. If you have an accent, you won't be laughed at and won't be questioned if you live in the city when speaking. And especially not be criticized when you speak the truth, even if it's difficult to hear, without fear of intimidation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nielsen. Is there someone else?
Yes. The next speaker is Mr. Adarian? I'm sorry, the spelling, I can't really... A-Adarian? Adari? And then after it, it says A-R-D-I? I'm sorry. Sorry.
How's it going, Lou? Excellent. I'm new here. I'm new to Paramount. I worked really hard to finally find my first place. I came out of college at a hard economic time, and I worked really hard to find my own paradise in Paramount, and I got to be finally a homeowner. So I'm new to Paramount. I don't know any of you. No one knows me. I don't know the crowd. I don't have any sides in whatever tension that seems to be. I've come here as a neutral party, as an outsider, and I just notice there's this tension. Every time I come to one of these council meetings, there's this tension. I don't, I don't know why. I don't know what's going on, and personally, I don't care. I feel like we all can just do a lot better by just taking a step back, by breathing, by resetting, and understand what we're all here for. We're all here for the betterment of Paramount. And I think another thing is, I know what you guys are doing is very difficult. Just sit there and get destroyed by some of these people. Every time I see you, there's a lot of negative comments. And I have a comment for the crowd. Well, I believe a couple of weeks ago, someone compared you guys to Saddam Hussein. I don't know if you guys remember that, or you've been called that many times. But let me tell you something. I lived under Saddam Hussein. I have three, my country, because of Saddam Hussein. And unfortunately, you guys are like Saddam Hussein. So we, as a group, as a resident, is, please, do not undermine you. I get it, these people aren't perfect. I don't know what's going on in those rooms. But to call people Saddam Hussein is an insult to what really those people have gone through, what I have gone through. And, you know, we can say the election this or that. I get, and I understand both sides to both of that. But that's not fair. No one is, none of you guys have been a millionaire, haven't become a millionaire because of this position you guys took in. You guys are here to help. And we can all respect each other, not only here. Let's respect each other online. Let's respect each other while we speak to each other. I'm tired of turmoil in the government. I'm tired of hearing CNN of all these negative things. I would just like to come to a place, a small city, where we could actually do well and be an example of what the entire country should be. Not, not the example of what it is now with infighting and a whole bunch of just bickering like schoolchildren. We can just do a lot better rather than trying to be so hard for our tribalism. Let's do what's right. And even if that means using the C-word, compromise, and not getting everything we need but enough to push the agenda further. I'm here again, and we're talking about the same stuff that we did three weeks ago. We can do better. We got bigger issues. We can just do better. Thank you.
Could you just pronounce your name for us?
People call me Arti for short because my real name's difficult, but Artivan is my real name. Arti's short, to just help everyone out.
Thank you for your comments.
No worries.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Tammy Kegley, and she wants to discuss car clubs.
Good evening, everyone. I would love to go over what everyone was just talking about, but I have a new issue. Every month, there is an issue that goes on behind my house, and I live at 8044 Rosecrans. And I'm right behind Paramount Park. And the issue we have is, on a monthly basis, and it seems like twice a month sometimes, three times a month, we have car clubs that come out and use the park. And they get very loud. And the last time that they came out was New Year's Eve. And they started at 6:30 in the morning with the music and the bumping of their radios. And it got very loud at 6:00. They started, like I said, they started at 6:30 in the morning. And we want to know, do you guys, is this something that you guys rent out to them? Do they rent out every month to the park? Because, do they have a permit? Because every month around the same time, it happens to us. And we have seniors that live on our property. Our house is shake. It's ridiculous. And the police had to be called out. The helicopters were there. The police had to tell them to leave and escort them away from the park. The park had to be closed. And no one was able to get onto the property if they were not home. One of our neighbors was not able to get in. She had to park down the street in order to get home to her, her house because the streets was blocked off because they, they had to wait till the park was totally cleared. Now, that was the extreme, but this is, like I said, a monthly thing where all the car clubs come to Paramount Park. They barbecue. It's not always where it gets out of control, but it is always a very loud situation whereby 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock, they start to leave. But we have people that work all hours of the day, and they sleep during the day, and it's very disturbing. So we'd like to know, do you guys rent these out? And what, what do we do? Because this has been going on for a long time.
Thank you for your comments. Our Public Safety Director, Adriana Lopez, will give you the information that you're seeking.
Yes, our next speaker, Madam Mayor, is Ms. Morelia Quiros. She wants to give thanks to the council.
Good evening. My name is Morelia Quiros. I'm a part of Musa, that program. And first of all, I'd like to give thanks to all of the council members in order to help, for working with us, the parents, in order to help our children. I'd also like to give thanks for the cooperation and for letting us use the meeting rooms for our events. I take great time, pride, and joy for being a part of this community. For we are all united. We are like a second family for our children. We all have a common goal, to see our kids succeed and go to college and universities. So then, I have to thank for the precious thing that you have with the bus to take the kids to the college, Long Beach College and Sarados College, so they can have a brighter future. They can move better as students and have progress. Sometimes I would like to suggest is to open the library on Sundays since most of the students have weekend work and sometimes they have to give their time on community service. And some of them, we know, they wait until the last minute to do their homework. We are focused on trying to get our community healthier by having the running marathon, some of the town, and wow, with the kids. Also for showing our kids their roots so they can know the hardships we've all gone through to get where we are today. So we know our deeds have to be strong as part of the community and as a part of the team. And they have to be proud of their moms and parents working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the last speaker is Mr. Tom Canas.
I just wanted to address, I know that it's a rather contentious issue, the air quality in this city. And I've seen that there's community-based groups that have voiced concerns, and it would appear to me that the council, while on the surface is giving the appearance that they're trying to do something, it thinks, it appears that it's coming up short of what the community group thinks needs to happen. And if this community is going to move forward, it's going to require the council to take more decisive action. I'm just reading, there's an update posted as recently as yesterday to what the city is doing to monitor specific companies and specific sites within the city. Most notably missing to me is Anaplex. I see that you guys are monitoring two or three of these forge work companies, but I don't see any updates about what's going on with Anaplex. And to my knowledge, the company that's posed the greatest risk to this community so far, because it's the only one that's been shut down repeatedly over the last few years, is Anaplex. And so I don't know if that's just by accident, but those types of things, whether they're emissions on purpose or there are emissions, there's an oversight. Maybe there's nothing to tell us about Anaplex. But when those types of things happen, that's how community-based organizations can get the perception that the City Council isn't doing enough. And so you guys are in the public service sector. That's your job. You oversee a city. You've got a budget of probably $40, $50 million a year to be able to expend here. I'm imploring you to do what's the right thing for the citizens in this community. My family has been in this community for generations. For nearly 100 years, my family has been in this area before there was a Paramount. Okay? And I have roots that run very, very deep here, and I'm very passionate about what goes on. I also know that it wasn't, it wasn't an accident that these metal finishing firms all ended up here. They ended up here because one came, and then another one came, and they found it was an easy city to do business in. That's not a crime. Nobody did anything wrong. But as years progressed, and more and more of these places came because they found that it was a safe haven, it then created an environment that was ripe for pollution and for things to go wrong. We cannot, as a small city, depend on the state or the federal government to be our oversight and our watchdog. It really is going to take the city to take an active, an active role in protecting its citizens. And not just for everyone that's here, but there's young generations that will come. If we want to leave a good city for them, okay, we're going to have to take action today. And so I implore you to do more to work with these community groups because the worst thing that can happen is that you don't, and then you're responsible for something that is irreversible down the line. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Has the monitor been removed from Anaplex? I know they just went through a curtailment.
They did go through a curtailment, you're right. There are currently three or four monitors within the vicinity of Anaplex, and they are, I believe there's one still right outside their door and two more that are right alongside the building. And there is one further down on Madison that catches any, any upwinds.
And are the R.D. rolling numbers still being reported on the AQMD website?
They are, correct. So you can go on to the website and see where they are. Anaplex, again, is right on Madison at Garfield. You're absolutely right. And you know what happened is, we found out this morning that AQD, they revamped their entire website. So I instructed our staff, as well as our communication specialists, to go back and make sure that any links that we have on our website as well as the environmental website link to their new site. So I looked at it this afternoon to try and find it, but I did find it, but it's kind of buried.
Is their new site up?
Their new site is up, yes. So it's all revamped. It's much different than what it was before. So we are...
But there is still a monitor in front of Anaplex.
Yes, there's still monitors.
Because I know they just went through a curtailment, right?
Right, they went through a curtailment. About three weeks ago, they were shut down. So they are, so definitely, sir, the AQD is monitoring them still.
Is that the last speaker card that we have?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, go ahead.
If you look at Wednesday, December 27, which is after the curtailment, you have two groups. You have 2.81 and 2.24, which is way over the amount allotted. And then on your third date, what they do is they no way load so that they don't have more days of high readings. But there's still spikes of 76 in the air. For two days, they're low. And for two days, the residents are having to read that year. And even though they're not being curtailed, if you look at the readings that they're making now, they're still well over anything helping for somebody to read. I think that's where the intention is.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Hanson, seconded by Hoffmeyer to approve the register, the consent calendar for the register of demands. I will be disqualifying myself on item 305493 and 30511. Those are made payable to my employer, therefore I'm disqualified from voting on them. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen? Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemons?
Yes, and motion on the other two items?
Make a motion to approve the other two items.
Thank you.
Move by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Martinez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen? Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemons?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to item 8, Community Organization Funding Request from the Paramount Library, Friends of the Paramount Library.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. The Friends of the Library has been a service club in the city for four decades now. They're a longtime volunteer group that aids our library staff. They help coordinate activities for the public, and they spearhead fundraising efforts such as book sales and book drives. So this is the first time that this group has approached us about a funding request. The City Council, as you know, has a policy for approving this type of funding request. And here's David Johnson to tell us more about this.
Thank you, John. Mayor and councilmembers. So the city currently has three types of groups that we've received funding through our community promotion budget. We have community service organizations. These are the groups that do provide services in town that the city does not provide. We have youth leagues that provide sports services to our kids. And then we have these other groups that do special events. So the Friends of the Library is a service club that is in town, and they are requesting event funding through our community promotion budget for an open house event that they're planning for Saturday, April 14, 2018. The event's goal is to encourage awareness of our local county library and the various programs that it provides. If approved, this funding request would fall under that other groups category. And funding for this group is a specific allocation based on their event costs. As a reminder, as John mentioned, the City Council did approve a funding policy regarding Paramount service clubs located in town. And it was that done at your September 6, 2016, meeting. This policy established that any Paramount service club that offers a community cultural event open to the public and offered at a city facility that the city does not otherwise provide is able to request funding from the City Council through our community organization funding process. Currently, only To Peak Sister City is the agency that has or service club that receives funding under that policy. While the Paramount Friends of the Library has never received funding from the city in the past, the city did used to have a very large set aside for the county library. Unfortunately, because when we lost our redevelopment funds and those monies flowed back to the county and the state, we were unable, we unfortunately had to pull that funding back from the county library. Our FY 2018 community promotion budget does have $4,000 set aside for miscellaneous groups that might come to the council. As the Friends of the Library is only requesting $2,000, and we do have available funds in our current budget, we are recommending that the City Council authorize $2,000 for the Friends of the Library in FY 2018. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, David. Any questions?
I think we'll move the item.
Thank you.
Move by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Hanson. I mean, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen? Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemons?
Yes.
I'd like to just state, I attended one of the Friends of the Paramount Library events during the summer, and it was a magic show where they probably had 75 children in attendance. And those children were so, so happy to see a magician, and we had the librarian read a story to them. So I'm very, very much in favor of...
And they did good work supporting them at $2,000. Item 9, Sports Facilities, the Modernization.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. This next item involves a rental of our sports facilities. The current fee schedule that we have on the books that we use when people want to rent out our sports venues is quite old and needs to be updated. Well, we don't get too many requests for the use of the sports facilities. We like to have a modern fee structure in place just in case we do get some requests. So sports facilities, just so you know, include such things as ball fields, the gym, as well as our new court behind the gym. So, and Dave will handle this item. Dave?
Thank you, John. Mayor and councilmembers, yes, we have a very old facility fee, sports facility fee schedule. schedule, and we'll do for some modernization. So, the facilities that we are talking about that would be rentable would be the ones listed there. Again, there are ball fields, gymnasium, and more importantly, our footsoff courts. We actually have recently received two requests to use our footsoff courts by organized groups based in Paramount, and we don't have a fee structure in our current system to even provide for that. And then, who can do that? So, it's available to city residents and/or Paramount-based groups that want to use those facilities. The groups that won't be affected by this fee structure, so obviously, city-sponsored youth leagues, this is PYSO, PGA, girls softball, none of those would be affected. Paramount Unified School District would not be affected. The Low Street YMC would not be affected when they are using the facility. And the miscellaneous organizations that we contract with, like the YMCA, that do provide youth and adult sports, so anybody that's working with the city to provide those services would not be affected by this. Facilities that won't be affected by this proposed fee structure include Village Skatepark. This is a facility that's very difficult for us to isolate for a dedicated use. Ball fields are less, are not, not quite in demand as the skate park, so it's very difficult to shut down that skate park, so it makes it difficult to have a, a private use for that facility. Paramount Park Pool is not something we're proposing at this time, it was something that we might want to come back at a later time and have a fee structure similar to the Splash Zone. And then Splash Zone is not covered because the council already approved a fee structure for the use of that. So, we surveyed our surrounding cities, and we surveyed Bellflower, Danny, Lakewood, Norwalk, and Southgate, our neighbors, and see how they structured their sports facilities fees. And they, they had these various factors that they looked at, so we'll be going over those factors really quick. The first one is just an hourly rate for the use of the facility itself. We're recommending an increase from our current fee for ball fields and the gym from ten dollars to, and again, even with my glasses, I'm struggling, I says thirty?
Yeah, thirty.
Wow, I really have to get better glasses. And then, we're looking at for the footsoff courts, a fifty-dollar fee structure, if I'm seeing that correctly. Now, the other cities, you'll see that they actually have a range. They structure their fees based on churches pay this, businesses pay this, residents pay this fee, so they're, they're all over the place. We're not recommending that we do that, we want to have a single fee structure for the various groups that would come to us. Our lighting usage fee, so ball fields, if you're going to use it in an evening event, obviously you're going to need lights. We have a fee structure that we're proposing for that at fifteen dollars per hour. Gymnasium, now, to use the gymnasium, whether it's day or night, you have to have the lights, so we're including that in the fee structure without an additional cost. And then, footsoff courts, they don't currently have lights. They are set up to have lights. As funding becomes available through, hopefully grants, we would like to add lights to that facility, so we'd like to have in place a fee structure for that time that we do get lights, and that would also be fifteen dollars per hour. A setup fee, so to get these facilities ready to go for any group that might be coming in, the gymnasium, you know, we have to do a dry mop, the ball fields, we may have to drag the fields, footsoff courts, we're going to have to blow off the courts, make sure there's no hazards. We're recommending a setup fee of twenty dollars for all those three sites. And site supervision, so, again, if you use a ball field, it's a question of whether we need to have a staff member there present at all times. On the ball fields and the footsoff courts, this can kind of, basically be managed by a drive-by supervision by our park supervision staff, so we're going to include that, there is no additional fee for supervision for those facilities. However, in the case of the gym, we are recommending that we would have a staff member there at all times, the facility is in use, and that would be at twenty dollars per hour. Equipment usage fee, now, they originally told us that this was part of their fee structure, but none of them actually charged for any equipment, or the equipment was not included in any use, so we're recommending the same thing. So, we would provide no, no equipment for any of these facilities, wherever in the case of the gym, we do have a built-in scoreboard, so that's something they can use. We obviously have built-in benches, all the facility stuff that is already there, but we're talking about, they, they can't borrow our basketballs, our footsoff balls, nothing like that, so there's no equipment provided in any of these fees. And insurance, we currently, it's not, under our current fee structure, it is not stated that we require insurance. We have informally done that as administrative policy, so through here, we want to formally require that third-party insurance is required when you rent these facilities, to again, protect the city from liability issues. And lastly, security deposit, we are not recommending a security deposit for use of the ball fields or the footsoff courts, but we would request a security deposit of one hundred dollars for use of the gym. And that concludes my presentation. We're hoping that the council will approve the modernization of these sports facility fees, because it's been about twenty-five years.
Thank you, David. Are there questions?
I just have one question. If somebody wants to rent a facility and for the insurance purpose, and they have to go out to a third-party, do you give them recommendations, like, or how do they find out, like, what insurance to call, or do you have, like, a list of agencies?
No, we do not.
Or are they on the road for that?
They're on the road for that. Again, it's, it's something, sometimes, I mean, we can set it up where, you know, we'll contact, Bellflower, we'll contact the cities that currently require the third-party insurance and see how they handle it, but, you know, like, kind of with our jumpers, you have to get third-party insurance through the, for the jumpers. Now, that's done usually through the jumper company, but you can also go through your homeowner's, homeowner's insurance. So, that will also probably be an option as well, so you can actually put that liability on your home insurance.
I understand, but you're not a homeowner, so you can't do that. I just don't want to make it so difficult that people can't figure out, that people can't figure out, you know, how to do this. So, I think if maybe we could get a list of options, who they can call, you know, through other cities.
We can do that, give suggestions, but obviously, we can't advocate for any particular.
Right, but just to point them in the right direction.
We can do that.
Thanks.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move by Martinez, and seconded by Hoffmeyer. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons.
Yes. Next item is an agreement for contract professional planning services.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. As you know, we have a small but very busy planning department, although it isn't as busy as we once were back in, the city's redevelopment agency was in full swing, there's still a lot of work that goes on back there, so. And to add this, as you know, we recently made one of the most substantial revisions to the industrial zoning code as a result of the air quality issue, and our work there is not quite finished there yet. In addition to that, there's a lot more planning work that is anticipated during this upcoming calendar year for the planned light rail line that the MTA is building through town. For instance, the environmental impact report is supposed to be released, the draft EIR this year, so we're going to be more involved in regional efforts for this major, major project. So, to keep our, our staff's head above water, if you will, we're proposing to hire a contract planner to help out with the day-to-day work, and Kevin will explain inside him a little bit more to you. Kevin?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Staff is requesting your approval of a professional services agreement to hire a part-time contract planner in the community development department. There's a need for additional staffing in this department, as John mentions, as over the last fourteen months, a tremendous amount of staff time has been devoted to other issues, including air quality. Community development staff has been the primary staff to the city council air quality subcommittee, and has been responsible for developing amendments to the industrial zoning code provisions. In addition, staff has worked extensively with AQMD to assist with their investigation in Paramount, as well as participating in the rulemaking process for new air quality Also, as you know, much staff time has been spent on the West Santa Ana Branch Light Rail Project, attending meetings and working on planning-related matters. And in two thousand and eighteen, this year, community development staff will continue to be involved with the air quality-related zoning amendments and light rail matters, as those issues will remain ongoing for the city for at least the foreseeable future. Because the city takes a conservative approach to staffing, we have a very limited number of planning staff, staff members including one assistant director, one planning manager, one planner, and one intern. A part-time contract planner hired for a limited term would be extremely helpful with the daily planning activities, such as responding to the public on zoning and land use questions, reviewing plans for development, conducting field inspections, and working with potential new businesses. Staff contacted several planning firms that provide contract staffing and selected Michael Baker International based on their experience, positive references from other cities, and their competitive cost. If this matter is approved tonight, sufficient funds are available to hire a contract planner over the next two months. Adjustments will then have to be made during the mid-year budget process to pay for this contract through the end of fiscal year eighteen. During the budget process for fiscal year nineteen, staff will then reevaluate the need for this contract position and submit its budget request accordingly. So, with that, staff asks your approval of this item.
Thank you, Mr. John. Are there questions? We have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move by Martinez, seconded by Hoffmeyer. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons.
Yes. The next item is a public hearing on ordinance number ten ninety-eight. Staff report, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. It's been almost two years that the city council outlawed all commercial uses of marijuana in town, including medical marijuana dispensaries. As we've all been hearing in the news, the sale of cannabis for recreational use became legal in California on January the first. Additionally, the private cultivation of marijuana in a person's home actually became legal as well. So, the proposed ordinance before you tonight makes certain tweaks to the ordinance that was adopted in two thousand and sixteen, and it also tweaks more, that these tweaks are more in line with the state code, with how it reads. The proposed ordinance also places certain restrictions on the private cultivation of marijuana in a person's residence, and here's Kevin to go over the item. Kevin?
Thank you, John. Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Before tonight is a zoning ordinance text amendment, also known as a ZODA, regarding marijuana operations, uses, and activities in compliance with the State Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. Last month, the planning commission reviewed this ZODA and unanimously approved staff's The purpose of this request is to reaffirm the city's current commercial marijuana prohibition that the city council approved in March two thousand and sixteen, and to prohibit outdoor residential cultivation, and to regulate indoor residential cultivation. What's led us to where we are today with the marijuana issue is the approval of Proposition sixty-four in November two thousand and sixteen. This voter initiative, as you know, legalized recreational marijuana use for adults twenty-one years of age and older. It allowed for the personal use and cultivation immediately after Prop sixty-four's approval, and with the beginning of this year, made the sale and taxation of recreational marijuana legal with local approval. Following Prop sixty-four's passage, Governor Brown signed the Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act into state law, establishing state regulations for marijuana businesses, and consolidating previously approved regulations under this new law. During its deliberations in December, the planning commission requested clarification in the city's ordinance regarding how marijuana could be possessed. On the advice of the city attorney, the, this matter was addressed by deferring marijuana use and possession to state law. In addition, other provisions already addressed in state law were also removed from the ordinance so as not to confuse provisions unique to the city of Paramount. As I mentioned, outdoor residential cultivation would be prohibited, however, indoor residential cultivation would be allowed with this ordinance with specific regulations. For example, cultivation or growing would be prohibited in common areas such as living rooms, hallways, kitchens, and bathrooms. Any such cultivation area would have to be properly ventilated to prevent excessive moisture that could lead to health, safety concerns, like mold and fungus growth. The ordinance seeks to maintain homes primarily for residential versus cultivation uses, and must have cooking, sleeping, and sanitation facilities at all times. Cultivation activities in homes cannot displace required off-street parking, such as in garages, and the city administrative, a city administrative permit for indoor residential cultivation must be obtained from the community development department prior to any growing activity. These regulations for indoor cultivation amount to a middle-of-the-road approach. As in other cities, they, some cities intend to regulate indoor cultivation by requiring a CUP, and in some other cities, they don't require any city permit at all. And regarding commercial marijuana activities, just so that you're aware of what other cities are doing, most are taking what's known as a wait-and-see approach, similar to what this ordinance proposes. However, there are several cities that are now allowing commercial marijuana activities, including those shown here. These cities are hoping that retail sales of marijuana will help to significantly increase their general fund revenue through sales tax and other local permitting fees. So, what are the next steps? With your preliminary approval tonight, the ordinance will have to be read a second time next month for final approval consideration. Following that, the ordinance would go into effect in March. Also, as mentioned in the report, the city may want to revisit whether to allow commercial marijuana activities in Paramount sometime in the future. However, at this point, the wait-and-see approach appears to be the most prudent. While the promise of additional local revenue seems appealing, the potential for public nuisances and public safety issues are also persuasive for taking the cautious approach for now. It'll be interesting to learn from the experiences of some of our neighboring cities, and that will certainly inform any changes or next steps that the city might nominate in the future. So, with that, staff seeks your approval of this measure.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. John?
I have one question. You're going to have to get a permit to grow a planting area, or are you going to monitor that, or are you going to enforce that?
Well, it'll be, it'll be similar to how we go about our code enforcement process. Our code enforcement process is, is, we, is complaint-driven, and as we get complaints regarding a potential residence that is growing, potentially without a permit, at that point, code enforcement will make a visit and take action as needed.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to move the item.
Wait a second, we're on a public hearing. Anyone else with questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. At this time, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the item should come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move by Martinez, seconded by Hanson to close the public hearing. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mar, Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons.
Yes. Have a motion on the item?
Make a motion to move the item.
Second.
Move by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Martinez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons.
Yes. At this time, we will move to committee reports. Ms. Martinez, anything on a committee report?
Yes, I'd like to share about Tree USA application that the city just approved this evening. By participating in the USA Tree, we will be joining thirty-four hundred cities in the country, and this Saturday, we will be having a become a tree steward at Paramount Park, and it starts at nine o'clock. And in this training, it will consist of learn about proper tree watering and urban forestry, and recruit neighbors door-to-door to water the new street trees. In the spring, we will be planting a hundred and fifty trees throughout the city on Arbor Day, so we haven't selected the date yet, but I will be attending the workshop on Saturday, so I would send an invitation to each and every one of you to join me Saturday, and then in the spring, plant a hundred and fifty trees throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Martinez, Mr. Hoffmeyer.
Yeah, I just want to say, yesterday I had the experience of going to the Ono Hawaiian Grand Opening, and I think this is now our sixth new restaurant that we've got in the city of Paramount, and I was very pleased with it, and I look forward to going there again, and I think everybody else should go there and try it, and I'm sure you're going to enjoy it.
I saw that there were some hula girls out there, too.
Yeah, yeah. Even got a lei and everything. It was very nice. It was very well done yesterday.
Councilmember Hanson.
Well, really not a committee report, but a comment, I guess I could say. Maybe a little old hat, but on the Christmas train that we recently did last month, the mayor of Artesia, Sally Flowers, asked me if there was any possibility that she could go along on one night or part of the night, and, which that happened at the vector control board meeting, actually, and I said, "Yeah, sure, we can, you know, we can arrange that." So, she did. I had explained to her a little bit what it was and so on, and she was totally amazed at the whole thing. She was walking around, taking pictures, and having people take pictures of her, like Dave can verify that, too. She was thoroughly impressed with the whole thing and the way that our staff handles everything, and she wanted me to invite you and your staff to thank you for everything, and it was really quite an opportunity for her to see that. One kind of side note on that, I told her that, "Well, wait until you go by the Christmas tree, the city Christmas tree." And she said, "Oh, you have one?" I said, "Yeah." And when we went by, she told me, "Well, you really don't want to go to Artesia and see our Christmas tree." So, she was very impressed with the whole thing, so thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Guian.
I'm not on any committees, but we're just making comments. I did get an email, and I'm not going to read the entire email, but it had to do with the new website and asking questions, or a survey, different types of survey about X, Y, and Z, and they just thought that since there is so much contention with the, either voting in 2018 or 20, that maybe with this new website, that where there's so much controversial comments and issues, that maybe that would be something we would be able to put on the website in the future to get public opinion. That's basically what it said, in a nutshell. That's it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't quite understand. So, which website are we talking about?
I guess our city website is being revamped.
Right.
And on the city website, they were asking a survey or questions on what you would like to see on the website. Are you familiar?
Yeah. So, like surveying the public about what type of items they would like to see included in the city website?
Correct, and they thought that perhaps in the future, since the issue on the voting has become such a contentious issue, that something like that maybe would be appropriate to put out as a survey, as opposed to just like what we would like on the website, but also to get public input.
So, actually, everybody kind of didn't give committee reports, they did comments, so I'm going to skip to comments also. And what I wanted to say was that, I wanted to thank the staff. I read in the Friday memo that we had nominated the Horchaparia for the ICCC program, and they took part in it, and they took their staff there, and that they had a great time. And then we received this really nice note from Raul Ramirez, who's the manager there, and I wanted to share that with everybody. He said, "We are very thankful to be part of a city that really cares about the successes of its businesses. We really appreciate the city of Paramount's continued support and love for Horchaparia Rialuna." So, that was really nice to hear from them. I'm really, I stopped by there actually this morning, they're doing very well, and we're really proud of them. The other thing I wanted to say was that I attended a luncheon, I was sorry, I saw that a lot of the moms from Musa left, and I wanted to call attention to them. I went to their luncheon, their thank you luncheon for all the work that they do for the city, and they had a great event. It was amazing to see how that group has grown. The entire room was full, and they asked the mothers a few questions while I was there so that we could get some feedback, and one of them was, how many of them were taking English lessons? And about 50% of the room raised their hand, so I was really glad to see that the facility was being used for that purpose. Even more than that, so many of us have the history, of course, of our PEP program, and as we all know, when we started that, Richard Hollingsworth told us, you know, the chief component of that program being a success is community buy-in, and them working with you, and that's exactly what these mothers are doing. Across the board, and that's why I think that they changed their name from PEP Moms to Musa, and I'm not even going to try to say it in Spanish, but I know that it means Women United in Active Service. And they are doing an amazing job. They're not here, but I will let them know this is on the video, and I just want to thank them for everything they do, and thank them for being so gracious to me at their luncheon.
Okay, with that, we're going to be recessing to the redevelopment.
Can I just mention one thing?
Sure.
Just in case any of you didn't know, Alice, who I had mentioned in about two city council meetings ago, was taking care of her husband Jay, who had leukemia, then found out he had lung cancer, and then had a heart attack all within a month's time. She was so busy taking care of him, she did not take care of herself, and she passed away a couple days after Christmas. And so, Alice was a person who was here every city council meeting for years, and she will be greatly missed, and I just wanted to recognize her, and if Jay is watching, we're sorry for your loss, Jay.
Thank you for that. It's exactly one of the statements that I was going to make, that we're going to recess into the redevelopment agency and then into closed session, and because a lot of times you're not here when we return, I just wanted you to know that we would be adjourning the meeting and remembrance of Alice, and Councilmember Guian's exactly right, I can't remember a day in the last 20 years that, you know, she wasn't in the audience whenever she was up to it, so she will be missed. So, we will adjourn the meeting in her honor when we reconvene. So, with that, we're going to recess to the successor agency, so I'm going to call that to order. Can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Guian.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Lemmons.
Here. We have any public comments?
No, we don't, no.
Okay. Consent calendar?
Make a motion to move it.
Second. Move by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Hanson. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Guian.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons.
Yes. And with that, we stand adjourning the successor agency, and we will recess to closed session on the regular council agenda.
Madam Mayor, just as for the record on the closed session, we have two items. The second item, evaluation of public employee, that's going to be continued to the next meeting, so we want to just make that the record.
Okay.